Okay, folks, let's go ahead and call this meeting the orderless stand recite pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend?
Reverend Powell, tonight, thank you for allowing us to come together here. Just thinking of the mayor and those that serve on the council, those that are serving this community, we actually bless them, that they're just be with them, that's it, to help us to see and know what we need and how to move forward, and this community can be a community that could be a light to others around, and give you thanks and praise in their name, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Could be seen it? Okay, first thing is roll call, Greg Smith, absent Lori Quinn, absent Mike Schneider, Adrian Saunders, Robin Simpson, Jason Osborne. We have a quorum. First thing on the agenda will be to review and approve the minutes from December 5th, 2024, Board of Aldermen meeting, that will be found under tab four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as prepared.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from December 5th, 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor, to approve the minutes from the December 5th, 2024 meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say may. Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the mayor's report, make this very short. We're going to need to schedule another working meeting for the budget review. With the holidays coming up, that's not happening, I don't think we would have enough people available until after beginning of the year, so I think what we'll attempt to do is to get something done in this, perhaps in the second week of January, might work for everyone. You guys wouldn't mind checking your calendars real quick, perhaps we can make a schedule today?
Is that at full week, or?
I think the second full week, but that first week is very short. I can't imagine having it after the first.
The 13th, I'm sorry, the week of the 6th or 13th?
I would like to do something on the week of the 6th. Now, we do have a board meeting that week on the 9th at 6:00. We have a planning and zoning commission meeting on the 8th at 6:00. There ought to be a public meeting right at the same, right at 6 o'clock on Thursday, we expect it to be a very short public meeting regarding a request for a conditional use permit. So, what's Tuesday, the 7th look like? I don't want to ask you guys to do this on Friday.
I can't do the 7th.
Can you do the 7th?
I cannot.
Okay.
What did you say there was on the 8?
Planning on zoning at 6:00.
How long is that usually last?
I think 30 minutes.
When we do it at 6:30 on the 8?
I'm all, I'm good. 8, 6:30? Jason?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, January 8th, 6:30, working meeting, budget continuation. Sorry, folks, I'm checking my notes, here's a, missed anything that's really important. Are you going to, city clerk, are you going to discuss the extended deadline for the meter obstruction issue in your, in your discussion?
Either now or later, either one of those five.
Okay. I'm not sure the best way to, best way to communicate is, when we, when we, when we advise the people reading the meters to start enforcing the ordinance, or if there's an obstruction and they can't read the meter, they would take a picture of the destruction, turn it into utilities clerk, and then they would fill out the work order to go shut off their utilities. And what happened is we had eight, eight new, seven or eight, brand new obstructions that we'd never heard of before. One guy had a steel pole in the ground about two inches in front of the, two inches in front of the gas meter, yeah, the gas meter, and that pole, you know, it's not like I'd go up there with the pole out. We had one where their fence was about two foot from the, a fence was about, wooden fence was about two foot from the meter, and there were several pieces of guttering laying down that you'd have to make a walk on top of to get to the meters. There was a couple other, and what struck us is these, we'd never heard of these before, no one had ever complained about these before, and so this would have been the very first time the residents had heard about it. This was on a Friday at about 2:00 in the afternoon, cold weekend scheduled, and it just didn't seem right, it didn't feel right to just, you know, hang a notice on their door and shut them off because they had never, they'd never, other than receiving perhaps the ordinance slap on their door, or reading it in the paper, or, I don't know about if we did a mail or not, I can't remember, we did, we tried to, we tried to communicate this multiple times since August, when this was passed, and it, we were getting ready to shut eight people off on a Friday at 3:00 in the afternoon, everybody's going home, they had no chance to do anything about it, and unlike where we had worked with people over and over and over with the issues with the fences, the issues with the pets, these people had never, had never been talked to before, had never had a chance to do anything at all about it, it didn't feel right, so we're going to come back, what did you do? You extended them out to when?
January 5th.
January 5th. So, those people were contacted, they were given until January the, whatever, and so, I don't know exactly how we're going to do this, but we're going to come back with a recommendation to the board that when a new obstacle, or the very first time an obstacle is brought to the attention of a, of a, of a utilities, a customer, that we're going to give them a specific amount of time to correct that, and I don't know exactly what that's going to be yet, we haven't, we haven't worked that out. What we'd like to do is if you're reading the meter on a specific day each month, or Tuesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, beginning of the month, that we at least give them until the next time we go read the meter, which would be roughly 30 days, but that's kind of, we're not even sure if that is the right number yet, but we're going to come back to the board at the next meeting. In the meantime, for new obstacles, we're just going to go ahead and give them roughly 30 days to get it fixed. The reason why we're kind of waffling on this, some of these obstructions are not going to get fixed in the dead winter, it's just not going to happen, and of course, do a bit of backtracking here, I may, I may very, very much regret having uttered these words, but we couldn't understand why our employees who read the meters waited till a Friday at 2:00 in the afternoon, on a cold weekend coming up, to tell us that, hey, you need to go, basically, basically, here's the instructions, go shut them off, and we're like, this, you've been reading these meters for weeks, months, years.
I was going to say to the instructions.
Why now did you, just why now, why this day? We felt like there was actually some other motive, but I'm not going to go into it right now.
Did the obstructions that you're talking about just occur?
No.
Okay.
No way, that pole had been in that guy's yard for years, and so it didn't feel right, it just felt like, we felt like we were being led down the garden path, and we were getting ready to do something that was wrong.
I totally agree.
They hadn't, they hadn't, they had never received the notes before, they'd never been talked to before, no one had ever went over and looked at their, at their situation, they hadn't come to the city hall and discussed it, it was unlike a lot of these other situations in many ways, so that's, that's just information for you guys. Anything else I have to discuss will be within one of the departmental, departmental areas, department reports, or the business, or old business, so that concludes the mayor's report. Next thing on the city clerk's report.
Got a copy there in your, in ads. Everything's going pretty well so far with the new hire, she's getting, she is getting her training done over at the license office side for the new fusion system, there's several trainings she's got to take, I think there's over 60 that she has to do.
60?
60.
6D, 60.
60.
Okay, I thought you said 16, 16.
So it's going to take some time, and unfortunately, when she is on that computer doing her work, they might get a customer that is going to need to utilize that computer as well. I did ask if there was a way we could get a third computer in here from the state where she could just do her training on, and at this time, that's, they don't have anything for us, so, she's doing them, you know, when she can. An update on the withholding tax, we're working on those now, plan to get all of them in the mail tomorrow. I got Phoebe, I ran some things off, and she's getting the taxes and the penalty calculated along with it, so a lot of, some of these from 21, you know, the tax originally would have been maybe $2,300, you're looking at over $4,000 now, penalties and taxes, so, and there's nine, I believe nine or eight different months, but I've got five.
I don't know, I think before we came on, wasn't there some taxes that were in a year as well, and we got, those got cleaned up?
That was DOR, sales tax on our utility sales.
I thought we owed the IRS some money though, did we, John, do you remember?
It was like $55,000 or something.
Wasn't there an IRS issue as well?
I have not, I haven't got to the IRS side yet, I've just got to this side because we have received notices that these are delinquent from the state.
Okay.
So, if we are delinquent on anything from the IRS, I haven't received anything from it, and I can reach out and call them too, and find out, and we can get that to work.
Been a significant number of, I apologize, people, significant number of findings that require correction. We'll get there eventually, folks.
I've attached the most recent statement there. It's everything for now.
That completion report? Okay. Okay, city attorney's report?
Nothing really to add that won't be brought up in other sections, mayor did sign the, I think, on the fire station, so that, that should have been the last, been that whole process.
We will need to contact someone within the rural, Monroe City area Rural Park Protection District, I believe they have equipment stored in one of our city-owned buildings, and we'll need to, I don't know if I can do this in this, I think I can, it's a legal matter. If they request to rent that building, does that, how does that affect us insurance-wise? Is a question for you, and then the question for the board is, do you want to allow them to rent that facility, to keep storing that equipment in it, if in fact they ask that question?
I mean, my thought on the insurance would be to just have them insure their property that's in our building beyond that.
Okay.
If we, if we did agree to rent any.
Usually though, doesn't the landlord have to have insurance on it, or the renter has rented insurance of some sort?
Well, the personal property would be the tenant's responsibility.
Chief James, are you aware of where they store the brush truck? Is it across the street, directly across the street?
It's right next to where the electric, the old electric office was.
So there's like an open area that's been torn down in this one single building setting there, is that it? Okay, thank you. We'll, who do you call, their secretary? They have a secretary, Jackie? We'll give Jackie a call.
Did that, that completion report?
So, that, that deed, that deed's been done?
It would be reported in our.
Okay.
So other than this rental, potential rental issue, we're done?
I'm sorry, what?
Other than this brush truck storage, if it comes up, we are finally done with all of the transactions?
I think we have, what, one invoice for them?
Their titles.
What about the titles?
Yeah. Titles we're still working on, there were, there were three titles that were very old, and Jennifer had to put the request in through our house for DLR to get replacement titles for those. We will have a few invoices to send them for cell phone.
And for Spectrum, I sent them their last name for Spectrum, and we have fully moved that over to them now, so, other than that, that should be.
I haven't, I'm not aware of them having, of them, the board having any issues that I have not brought into my attention. I think things are going as smooth as they possibly can be, there's a few little loose ends that tie up, and I think we'll be there.
Any guess at how long those titles might take yet?
I don't think that's held them up on the insurance side, though. I don't think it has.
I don't think they can insure them until they have them in their name.
I don't know, I don't know. If that's the case, I guess we turn over the ones that we can turn over and.
They have all of the titles with the exception of those three.
Okay, so they have them all except for the three, okay.
Oh, okay.
That wasn't clear to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they have all of them, and then the three that they don't have, they do have the then for, so if they do need to get insurance coverage, they can, you know, get that to their agent.
Anything else?
Mix, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is our authorized guest speaker, we have Janet McCartney, would like to address the board.
Evening.
Hi.
Hello. I wanted to address the board about the same obstruction ordinance. Last month, my utility, my gas was shut off with no notice because of a dog in the yard. There, I have little house dogs, which I have pictures of, if you'd like to see them.
I'm sorry.
So you can see that they are little house dogs, they stay in the house unless we let them outside to go to the bathroom, so, anybody wants to see, but those are my little dogs. At the time, I made several phone calls to city hall trying to figure out what had to be done, what I needed to keep my utilities on, I ended up being hung up on. So when that happened, I went to our mayor's home and spoke with him, and he called city hall, and I heard Phoebe tell him that my dog had bit one of them, my dogs don't bite. If they won't come in the yard to read the meter, how did they get bit? So when I requested information from the city about all of this, I was denied three different times for this information. And what I had asked for was dates when they had been there to check the meter, because they said the dogs were out twice, and they can read the meter, and they knocked on the door, which they did not. I have my time punches to show when I'm home and when I'm not, if I'm not at home, my dogs are not outside. I feel like my utilities were illegally shut off because again, there was no notice, and according to, let's see, the Department of Commerce and Insurance, I'm finding the right sheet here. I have the right one, I'm sorry. Okay. This states that under this continuance of service, this is chapter 10, I believe, and, oh no, 13, in the department, under the Public Service Commission area. Under disconnection of service, none of the following shall constitute sufficient cause for utility to be discontinued, failure of a customer to pay for merchandise, failure of a customer to pay for service, failure of a customer, that goes on, on down further. On the date specified on the notice of discontinuance, which I did not receive any, and I have everything that I have gotten from the city. It's, discontinuance are within 30 days after that, and subject to the requirements of these rules, a utility may discontinue service between the hours of 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Service shall not be discontinued on a day when utilities personnel are not available to reconnect the customer's service on or a day immediately preceding such like weekend or whatever. After the 30-day calendar, 30 calendar day effective period of the notice, all notice procedures required by this rule shall again be followed before the utility may discontinue service. The notice of discontinuance shall contain the following information, name and address of the customer and, or, I'm sorry, name and address of the customer and the address, if different, a statement of the reason for the proposed discontinuance and cost for reconnection, date owner after which service will be discontinued unless appropriate action is taken, a customer, how a customer may avoid discontinuance, possibility of payment agreement if it's a dispute, and a telephone number the customer may call from the service location without incurring toll charges, and the address of the utility prominently displayed where the customer may make an inquiry. An electric, gas, or water utility shall not discontinue residential service pursuant to section one unless written notice by first-class mail is sent to the customer at least 10 days prior to the date of the proposed discontinuance. Service of notice by mail is complete of a mailing, as an alternative, a utility may deliver a written notice in hand to the customer at least 96 hours prior to discontinuance. None of these statutes, whatever you want to call them, were followed, none of them. The only thing that I got is the date of that they discontinued it was this, and this coming on my door. There was no advance notice that there was an issue, I've lived in this house for 16 years and have had dogs the whole time, and it's never been an issue. So I feel like my utilities were illegally shut off pursuant to the guidelines here, and I believe that I should be reimbursed for the $40 reinstatement fee and the wages that I lost by missing work the following day to have my utilities turned back on because they refused to do it the same day. And also, there's one other thing, according to the city's own utility policy off of their own website, it basically states the same thing about giving notice. So none of those procedures were followed, and my rights were violated by not getting the information that I requested. It also states in the city's utility policy that they will keep records of any of these complaints, reports, discontinuances, on and on. The information that I did get from the city is one little letter that basically answered nothing. It says, in reviewing your request for information, there are only certain records we have on file. The meter obstruction ordinance passed August 8th, blah, 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 we do not have any written records of dog bites. When utility personnel went to get a gas reading in November, they could not access the meter due to a dog, therefore your service was disconnected. Okay. I understand you have the ordinance, and I understand it is for obstruction, which again, if you look at the ordinance itself, says nowhere, anywhere about pets being in the yard. It says obstruction, and it calls for grass, shrubs, refuse fences, parked vehicles, and easily accessible, if that's what it lists.
A dog is an obstruction.
It's not listed.
A dog is an obstruction.
Okay, but it's not listed.
Do we need to list dogs, cats, rabbits?
It lists actual physical obstruction.
A dog is a physical obstruction.
I'm not going to argue the point because it's viewed. But like I said, not only were my utilities disconnected illegally, my rights were violated by not getting the information that I requested. Thank you.
Well, I don't have the section you were reading from, but I don't think those apply to municipally-owned utilities.
It does. Like I said, it's chapter 13, you can look it up yourself.
It says on their very website, does not apply to municipally-owned utilities. We are not Amman, we're not one of these large multinational companies, it will stand a legal challenge. Okay, let me see, new business, Monroe City Library, do we have a representative here that would like to address the board?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, Megan.
Hi, so most of you know Gina Carroll was the president, her term, he took in in October, and I was the lucky one to take her place. I'm going to give you three because I see there's two members out in case you want to put that in. Your fancy binders. Thank you. So as you know, we are trying to get our finances separated from the city, there are state statutes involved that require us to do this, the Secretary of State and Missouri State Library have been in touch with Mayor Miller on this issue in particular about getting a separation, but we have opened two accounts at things, one will be for special funds, like grants or aid type things that have special requirements that have to be followed, the second account is for just general ledger type things. We've had several meetings with Mayor Miller, trying to find a plan that is suitable for everyone involved, we don't want to put the city in a bind by any means, but we do, we do have to get this done at some point. I know the budget is still being worked on, hopefully this year it will get resolved. So as you can see from our plan, we'd like to ask for $30,000 to start by January first, that would cover our expenses for a quarter. Sometime in January, we will have tax money that come in, that will be, will come to us at this point to be put into the individual bank account, and then February and March, if agreed upon, another $30,000, then by April 1st, if we can get the balance and the budget all sorted, and we agree on everything, transfer the rest of the funds. If that needs to be extended, we are understanding of that, and we'll work with the city to get it done. Any questions? Do we need a vote? What needs to happen?
I will remind the board that the city clerk and I had the pleasure of discussing our plans with Secretary of State's office, as well as the. our plans with Secretary of State's office, as well as the State Library, several weeks ago, and we committed to the Secretary of State's office that we would have the, how do I, how do I characterize this? The
Separation.
Separation's good, I was going to say divorce, but that sounded mean. Separation completed by the end of the first quarter of 2025. So, Danette and I have had several conversations about this, and there was absolutely no reason why we can't, can't commit to, to this plan. Danette and I were a little more, our plan was a little more aggressive than this, but we're certainly not going to say, say, say no.
So we're trying to be easy to work with.
That's great, I think that's awesome. You know, so what I need from a member of the board, if y'all have questions, I apologize, ask away.
I think these numbers are in line with what we had.
The April first number will be the most important one.
Right.
Okay.
The initial ninety should be well under what's in the account.
Correct.
Okay.
I think I can say this without getting in a whole lot of trouble, it's, it's probably somewhere between a hundred and sixty, maybe as high as a hundred and ninety, we don't know yet, it's somewhere in that range. What they showed me was their proposal was one seventy-six, two eighty-one. I don't know if that's the number or not, I just really don't know, but I know we can do what they've asked us to do without having any type of financial issues for the city of Monroe City, so what, you know, we need to have further discussion, that's great, first, and I do want to have further discussion while you guys are here, but I'd like to go ahead and get this out of the way if we can.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed transfer funds to library board.
Okay, y'all have it in front of you, have any questions about it? Do we have a second? I have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the proposed transfer of funds as presented by the Monroe City Public Library. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. One of the things that Megan and I talked about, and I'll go over this real quick, and everybody's got a lot going on, and they've got a lot ahead of us tonight, is, Megan's been wonderful to work with, and so has Darren, and of course Diane Poore. We're going to have to come to a resolution on how much space they're renting and what is a acceptable rate. There are certainly, there are guidelines that prevent us from doing anything below typical market, we'll have to determine what that is. I think you guys are already working on insurance, is that correct, for the contents?
Yes.
And then a separation, if you haven't already done so, with the telephone or phone service.
Yes, so our, our plan will, because the, the monies will be in our control at that point.
Absolutely.
So basically, any utilities, phone, internet, elevator,
Well, yeah, we've got to
that kind of things, we, we would basically pay you.
Okay, so basically, I, I get where you're going, like a pro-rata based upon something. The, the rent, if you want to call it rent or lease or whatever, it's fairly straightforward, this number square, square footage, would you be acceptable to, if your square footage is eight hundred and ours is eight thousand, you'd pay ten percent? Get my drip?
That would have to look into because I don't know what the deal was when they traded this space for that space.
I don't know.
And I don't know that there's any official record of it. I have to look through a binder this thick to see if they're maybe in minutes. I don't even know what year that transfer occurred in.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So.
Why couldn't you just get, get a realtor to give you a price for square footage?
For the rent?
No, square footage.
Square footage?
Price per square footage.
You're talking about the agreement that was made though?
Yes, when they swapped, because we, in doing the swap, we lost the Carnegie status too.
I don't have my one. Yeah, well.
You lost the what status?
The Carnegie library, which gave us more aid
Oh.
on a yearly basis for having that status.
Can you get it back?
Cannot get it back. We would have to be, it was because the library was in this space and how old this part of the building was.
Oh.
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay, so we've got some more work to do.
Completely independent.
Was the library
Yes, so the Secretary of State defined, finally defined our library as an independent
The library's always been managed by the city.
Political subdivision.
From its very beginning. So, I'm sure
On that paper I gave you, I, I thought there might be questions about the status, the statutes, all that, so there is a website. Everything to do with library statutes is under chapter one eighty-two, if you want to leave and have questions.
Any questions?
So there's still lots to work out, and like I said, we're, we're going to work with the city and we'll figure it all out before it's all said and done. You know we're doing this for
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
We won't meet again before January first.
Yeah.
So, we need a vote to pay it, yeah.
We approved it, shouldn't we?
Well, we approved this payment plan, do we have to do anything else?
I wouldn't think so, because that's on there, January first.
So you can, you can disperse the funds based on this vote?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
Then do we need to give the routing number to, for the monies?
He wants to write you a check.
Do what?
Can we just write you a check?
Do you want to do that, or do you just want to, because we will have, like, the tax money will still come to the city, but then that needs to be forwarded on to us whether it's paper check or
What, what we typically do is write a check, that way you've got a written document that shows that this is the amount, you see, this is the amount we dispersed. You can do electronic, but
I have another state check written.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, do it by check, so says the board. Okay, next thing we have is Monroe City liquor licenses, also under tab nine.
There's only one that hasn't paid, are they going to change?
Two, I will make a comment, Dougout has paid today, Dollar General's been contacted, they have mail payment, but with the mail being what it is, they're trying to figure out what it is.
And it's due by the end of the year, right?
Don't you say that.
Yes, today. And now Dollar General has mailed a check.
Dollar General what?
Has mailed a check.
Same mail, right? Okay, any more questions on the liquor licenses?
By the end of the year, right? Even if it's not paid, the dollar, do we not include Dollar General?
Yeah.
What, what was that?
Everybody but Dollar General has paid.
Everyone has paid but Dollar General, it's in the mail. So to approve these, we would need to exclude Dollar General because they haven't officially paid yet.
Do we approve these?
Make Dollar General's contingent on their check arriving.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five liquor license. And would you please restate that?
The exception of
Contingent
Contingent on
Contingent upon Dollar General paying their unpaid liquor license fee.
By the end
Or that it will arrive before January twenty-five.
Yeah, they're going to get the license, right?
Right.
Okay, we need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five City of Monroe City liquor licenses contingent on Dollar General paying their one hundred fifty dollar unpaid liquor license fee by the end of the year.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the City of Monroe City twenty twenty-five liquor license contingent upon Dollar General paying their liquor license fee by the end of the year, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor, approve the City of Monroe City twenty twenty-five liquor license contingent upon Dollar General, for Dollar General only, contingent upon them paying their liquor license fee by the end of the year, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is a building inspector appointment, as I reminded myself our last meeting, the building inspector position is a mayor oral appointment. I've interviewed two individuals, based on my interviews, I would like to propose that Bob Alpizer become the building inspector for the City of Monroe City. We would enter into a contract with him similar to what we've done in the past, the same pay structure as in the past, and the same percentage of fees in the past. Bob's a young man, he's, not young to me, a young man, and he's spent a lot of years in the construction industry, he has not done this before, but none of the applicants had done this before. So I'm requesting the board to approve, approve my appointment, Bob Alpizer to the position of building inspector.
Does he need to take any sort of certifications or training to?
The, no, short answer is no.
In his contract that he signed, there is something in there
There's a contract in there about achieving a certification within like two years.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of like
Yeah. Where's Bob live?
I didn't bring his, here.
He's local.
He's local, in Monroe City, I, I didn't bring it, I didn't bring it with me.
I don't know, I've never heard of it.
He's had his applications in months, he's had that place in Phoenix. We, we don't have anybody beating our door down. I know that the previous board back in twenty twenty-three looked at doing the full-time, full-time building inspector slash nuisance code enforcement, and they were salaries up in the fifty, forty to fifty, sixty plus range, and they interviewed, I went back and looked through all of them, they interviewed several candidates, and they, they found one that they were really interested in, offered a position, he refused it at the compensation provided, and I looked at it and I'm going, I don't think this is going to work right now for us. Try to go down that route for a full-time person, it's just, we're, we're not, we're not there, we're not there right now.
He works for the fire department also.
That's correct, full-time firefighter, he does construction, residential and commercial, so.
When this would, when would that be effective?
January sixth.
Okay.
I've talked to current building inspector, who was asked for many, many months just for us to try to find a replacement, so he's well aware of it and has absolutely no issue with it whatsoever. So I need a motion to approve the mayor oral appointment, Bob Alpizer to the position of building inspector.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the mayor's appointment of Bob Alpizer to the building inspector, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second on the floor to approve Alpizer as the building inspector perceived, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you very much for your approval. Next thing we have on the agenda, it should be located under tab, tab nine, is a copy of, a, a copy, it's active copy of an ordinance that's not been assigned a bill number, which we wanted to talk about before we go down that road. As you are aware, a PILOT, P-I-L-O-T, ordinance, that's an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes, if there was an entity, a business that supplied our electricity, or supplied any of our utilities, and they had a building, and they had land, and they had equipment, they would, we would be receiving tax revenue based on the value of their real property and the assessed value of their other property that, that they may use in the conduct of their business. So those taxes that would otherwise be paid to the City of Monroe City are not because they're city-owned utilities. The legislature, understanding that those losses of revenues create revenue shortfalls, allow municipalities who own their own utilities to tax those utilities. So it's a payment in lieu of taxes, and also to charge those utilities an administration fee for handling all their issues such as HR issues, billing, billing on both ends collection, as well as all other administrative functions that are required to operate those utilities, and of course, there's significant documentation, recording paperwork required by the state government, the federal government, DNR, and it goes on and on and on. Those of you who recall the twenty eighteen audit by the Secretary of State's office, if you're familiar with that document, it alludes to questions about, well, I'm going to cut to the chase, they said we should, we shouldn't have done that without an ordinance in place. They didn't say it was illegal, they didn't say it was wrong, they just said, it wasn't au, we didn't, we hadn't authorized doing it.
Right. It also should help budgeting, because you know, this is how much we're getting, we're not dipping into utility funds, because you needed to pay for once, so. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine, I appreciate the, I appreciate the characterization.
Yeah.
And so what we are going to propose is to assign a bill number to this, I rang up for the board to approve doing what we've been doing for twenty years.
This is basically taking the place of the franchise tax.
Correct.
Right, yeah, because under a franchise tax, it wasn't proper, but this would be proper.
This would be, we engaged MPUA professionals to provide guidance, John sought, found, and has presented an orders from another Missouri municipality that owned its own utilities, and this is what they use, probably, I don't know if you did a verbatim word for word, or modified it a little bit here and there, but this should be an enabling ordinance that answers the question that was asked in the last state auditor's audit. And as we move forward, from time to time, and we'll continue to review that Secretary of State's audit, and attempt, where possible and when timely, continue to address those issues because very few of them have been addressed. And at some point in time, I'll be coming back and talking to the board on a different day, at a different time, obviously, about a very concerning couple paragraphs in there that, they concern me a lot about if there are potential future audits. So we'll get that another time, so do you have any questions about this particular ordinance before we move on?
No, it's very clean, it's clean.
You think it's clean?
Yeah.
Mike? Adrian? Mr. President of the board?
I like that. It's funny with me.
Okay, well, what about you, city clerk? All right. That pretty much does that. I got to check my notes here for a second. So next we have will be
Are we going to vote on it or vote on it?
Oh yeah, we'll just, we're just, basically we wanted to get a sense, a sense of, you know, go, stop or go. And so at the next meeting, Canet will bring us forth as a bill. Okay. Excuse me for the cough. I do apologize. Okay, so moving right along, anything from planning and zoning? No, I have something to report. We will have a planning and zoning commission meeting on January the seventh.
Eight, eight. Before our budget.
Yes, on Wednesday, second week of January. Okay, on January eighth at six P M., we're going over a conditional use permit request and also a site plan for a, I guess it's a new subdivision. Is that accurate? No, not subdivision? Okay. So, and then on the ninth, we'll have a public hearing right before the board of all, actually scheduled for six o'clock, right before the board meeting, or at the same time the board will be called to discuss, have the public notice or public meeting referencing the conditional use permit for that one property. And then we'll proceed to the regular board meetings. That's it for planning and zoning. I just got something else. Parks and cemetery, we need to correct that because that's not, this is not the correct name of that, of that, of that.
What should it, what should it?
Parks and cemetery.
Strange combination. That's a strange combination.
That's what, it's been historically and the members of the, of the committee asked it to be restored to its original name. And to me, it's tip, tip or tat. I, that tells me a problem. You know, I appreciate their willingness to volunteer to do stuff on their own time. So if they want to change, I can try to accommodate people for helping you. Mr. Steve Yates submitted, submitted his resignation yesterday as chairman of the Parks and Cemetery Committee. He went over several items of, of concern, of things that need to be, need to be done or completed or worked on. He, he gave me a significant, he gave me a significant amount of documentation. So we'll be going through that and I'll be meeting with some of the members from the Parks and Cemetery Committee to give their input on potential new members as well as to see if any one of those individuals would like to take over the chairmanship. And we'll, we'll, we'll work through that. But Steve has, has been a real trooper. He's, he's been out there at the, at the front of this for many, many years. And he's brought a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience and, and above all, he's brought sticktuitiveness to that position. And managed to accomplish quite a bit in spite of us. You know, I'm talking about all administrations for decades. He was pushed and he shoved and pushed and shoved until he got things done. And I think that their, their involvement with the parks and the lakes and everything has been very, very beneficial. You know, pushing along with the, the street department that maintains these things, but it kind of goes hand in hand. So I think we ought to consider doing something, a plaque of some sort for Steve and then do a presentation here in one of the meetings. And it's a very small recognition for decades of, of service to the city. And, you know, the only compensation they get is the self-satisfaction that they've done a good job and that they made a difference. And Steve has definitely made a difference. So I'll move right along to economic development. I don't know anything about, not development.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, next thing, administration committee.
Yeah, Robin, wouldn't you say on the thirtieth you could meet?
I can't this Friday, but I could on Monday, yeah.
That's the thirtieth?
Yeah, Monday, the thirtieth.
That's fine with me.
But time?
Have you got your agenda for that yet? Put together? Okay, we need to, I, I think we'll probably get Jason to put together a agenda. I don't, you guys got some items that you really want them to take a good look at.
Five thirty?
That's fine, five thirty.
Better brand, better brand lunch or supper.
Yeah.
At least finger food.
Potato tots.
Potato tots, okay.
One of the things Ronnie charges us with was the, oh gosh.
I have to look at my notes, my friend.
It was the.
Job description.
Job description. Do we, how, do you, do you have job descriptions?
I've got a lot of job descriptions and I think that you all could, we can make copies and give them to you guys and you can sort through it and try to see if it makes any sense. I'll get with Alex. Would you, would you write that down for us?
That I wanted on the agenda was what he had instructed us to do. Whatever you all.
Couple more items I think that you all want to get involved in. It would be very, very beneficial to get your all's input. Trying to, we're trying to, we're making every, it may not seem like, we're making every effort to accomplish as much as we can, as quickly as, as we can. And being able to get these individual committees to work on some of these areas and bring back recommendations will make it go a lot faster. A lot faster. How about indigenous review board, public safety? You know, one, one thing that I think the City Clerk's office did today was to mail out the most recent ordinance and mail that out, the alderman who owned public safety, is that correct? And also to Chief James, to make sure that he had in his hands the very latest ordinance, which I think gives him and his office and his department more motif, if you will, in, in working on, working on those issues. Okay, if everyone's okay with it, we'll move on to department reports. The first thing on the department report would be the police department. Chief James would divide his input.
That's true. We'll just have discussion.
You too.
Oh boy.
You have my, you have my sympathy. So do we need to wait for him to come back? Is that what you're saying?
Probably because I don't think he can.
If he wasn't here for the discussion, he can't. Sorry. Relax.
Move on to water? Oh, we still can't do it. What do you got?
Well, but we don't, do we need to vote? Are you taking it on you?
Oh, okay.
We, we have a, a maintenance item to address. Things were out.
That is true.
All you sickies.
I know.
All right, you don't want to have bronchitis in Barcelona?
No.
It's okay. We, we respect your presence.
You may proceed.
Thank you.
What'd you say?
For a whole two minutes.
Yeah, but you were quick.
I don't have anything big of work. I'm trying to get stuff downstairs lined out. And I'm needing to go out for bids on repair for one room downstairs to turn that into the P D. It's not going to take a lot of rooms. It's twelve by twelve room. It's got two walls that need a small section at the top fixed and repaired and then the drops. So I'm just requesting to be able to go ahead and run this as an add-in paper for a two-week period. Be starting January first, running through January fifteenth, so we're past the holidays and then go from there.
One thing, it's a, okay. Okay.
Think we'll be fine just keeping this local. It's not a big jump, so we're not going to drag anything by for us. As long as you're all okay with that, I'll be that put out.
We don't have to vote on bid requests, do we?
I'm sorry.
Do we have to vote on a bid request?
No, one thing I would just like to add is that they carry insurance. I can get that information to you on insurance requirements and holdups and things like that.
Okay, so that could be an addendum to this second page? Okay. That works.
That's all I need. Anything to answer your questions?
No.
Okay, next, we have the water department.
And wastewater department. Do you have the quote from CoGen or Vander Venter Engineering? It's for the Mosswood Lift Station.
Okay, commander.
It's an email?
Yeah.
So the Mosswood Lift Station, Mosswood Lift Station has two pumps and one of the pumps failed. We had it removed and then we sent it to Vander Venter Engineering for them to review what needed to be done to repair the pump. And the repair cost came back at, I don't know, the, it's in the eleven thousand dollar range and a brand-new pump is twelve thousand dollars. So.
Plus there's a disassembly charge of seven twenty. Is that?
That is only if we do nothing. If we do not buy, if, if we have a repair or if we do, if we buy a replacement, then that's. But if we, if we just say, no, we're, we're not going to replace it, they'll charge us instead of hundred dollars.
Did we discuss this once before already or something like this?
Yeah, I, I let you know that it was coming. I was waiting on the, the numbers to come back from Vander Venter.
There was discussion on whether if, if we went with the new, could the old be revamped?
That was the motor at the water treatment.
How old is the pump that broke that's not working?
About two years.
Is it under warranty?
It, there was something large that got sucked up into the pump and it ruined the pump. It bent the shaft, broke the.
Wouldn't wear that, we broke it.
That type of could it be?
It could have been a chunk of wood. It could have been a rock. It could have been, I, I have no idea. It was probably something that was in there since construction happened and it just has been slowly working its way down. It was, it's, it's out of Mosswood, so almost all that out there is brand-new, but yet there has been construction. There's been connections to the mains that when contractors dig, stuff can fall in there. And we're not there to see a hundred percent of what, what they do and, you know. But there was nothing in the pit. We actually used the, the vac truck and backed the entire pit out. We, we couldn't find anything in there. It's, it's, everything's clean. So whatever it got sucked up in there probably got chunked up and ended up getting discharged.
You said you did vacuum down in there?
Yes, ma'am.
So those work in tandem? Isn't there two pumps?
There, there's two pumps, yeah. It's, they're, they're on an alternating process. So one pumps down and, and if we get a lot of rain and we get a lot of I N I infiltration, both of the pumps can run at the same time. But we, on all lift stations, you're required to have redundancy.
Right.
What is the useful life you typically, I'm just thinking, there's only a thousand dollars difference between an old one and a new one, but the old one's only two years old.
Right.
If, if it's a fifteen-year useful life typically or?
The ones we replaced were probably in the twenty-year range. We have a, we have a work order every year where we pull them out, change the oil, we check the impeller and stuff. And after a while, they do start getting weak. And where we were when we replaced all these lift stations was that we either needed to start replacing pumps or pulling pumps, having them sent in and rebuilt. So somewhere around the five-year mark is what the pump manufacturer is going to say that the, the pump is starting to wear. You have twelve of these pumps out there and you know, you got six lift stations, so you got a total of twelve. I would suggest in a couple more years, we set up some sort of rotating where we pull them out, send them in. They can run through them, but that's not for today. Today, we just need to decide whether we're going to rebuild or replace this pump.
Is anyone identical to this one?
Yes.
Spare parts?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we could get it back, but again, the, the shaft on that one is bent, the impellers broke, the, there's not a lot of spare parts. It's nothing that we would actually be able to, we, we could change the blute, we could possibly change the impeller, we could change the, the cable. I'm going to ask for the cable back because the cable, I don't know if you, when I did it, but there was one cable that we bought that was almost three thousand dollars. Yeah, I can get that back, so.
Is, you have some sort of monitoring to monitor if those pumps started having trouble?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We actually do a work order every quarter and we amp them. And if, if, and there's three legs on it, so if the amps go up or down on one of the legs, it normally identifies that there's an issue. But yeah, every single lift station except for the one at Shelter Workshop has what's called a mission unit. And so it tells us when, when they're running, when they're not running, if there's some sort of pump failure, seal failure. Yes, there is monitoring on, on all the pumps.
We need the board to approve the pay for the.
Either repair or.
Yeah, either repair or replace. Yes, sir, that's what I need.
For a few hundred dollars more, you get a rainy pump for warranty, I think I would.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact dollar amount between the two.
I've got it. The new one was twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And to repair the other one is eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents.
So it's running a thousand dollars difference.
Your call. New one makes more sense. Does it come with the cable?
Yes, it will come with the cable and.
And it'll have a warranty, right?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have either six or, six month or one-year warranty. It's, it's not very long, but they are in some, they're in some pretty nasty.
Nasty stuff.
Nasty stuff, yes.
Probably be faster getting a new one than having to rebuild the two.
Yes.
I make a motion that we purchase a new pump for twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion second on the floor to purchase a new pump for twelve thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-three.
Two hundred and twenty-three dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Second thing is annually, the board has to approve a maintenance agreement with Hock Company. Hock is the maker of all of our analytical equipment at the water plant. They come in and they do, they, they check our turbidity meters, ensure that they're calibrated. They calibrate our spectrometer and, yeah, she's got a copy of it there. I talked to the mayor about this and he said it's a budgeted item, but I was asked to go ahead and bring this up. And so you guys can look at it and see, I believe they. Uh, I believe they, they removed our, uh, pH meter, which is, uh, you know, they're, it's a couple thousand dollar, uh, meter and, uh, they, they do wear out after a couple, you know, you're looking at four to six years probably. Uh, we purchased one, I want to say two years ago, so I'm not worried about that. We replaced the probes on them ourselves. It's.
So we do, or do we have a pH meter right now?
No, we do. It's just not going to be on the maintenance program anymore. They, they no longer support.
I see.
The, uh, that, that particular instrument. After it gets to be so old, they.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know if the board has to approve this since it's a normal budget item, but since we don't have an approved budget. So, um, I'll leave it up to you how we address this. But the maintenance agreement is going to be over in January, so we need to renew this.
So this is the renewal quote?
Yes.
So basically, if I understand you correctly, the total of this is, is, uh, eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars?
Yes, sir.
Are there other companies that offer the same type of agreement or is it?
They, yeah, but, but, uh, it's, this is their equipment, so nobody else will come in and work on HAC today, so.
So do we own the equipment or lease the equipment?
You own the equipment.
We own it.
Oh. Yeah.
I get it.
You own, uh, three turbidity meters, uh, that are online or in line and then you have one bench top.
Okay. Well, in, in absence of an approved budget, I think we'd need to have a vote on this. And even, even, well, the, the difference would be, uh, if it was in an approved budget and approved cap act that you all approved, at some point in time, they would purchase it and it would show up on the bills payable and you would approve the bills payable. But once we don't have an approved budget, I think it wouldn't hurt to do this via the emotion and board approval.
And this is an annual contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Fair enough for you.
Yeah, when we do the, uh, the chloramine addition, there will be one of the units that will move off of, of the maintenance agreement. Uh, the C L seventeen continuous chlorine analyzer will be removed.
The, uh.
Which is the first one, eleven, under eight one dollars?
Yes.
So they come out four times a year to calibrate?
Yes.
You said the spectrometer's not on here anymore? What did you say?
No, it was the pH meter. It's like a, it's since ion, uh, the, the, in the body of the email that, uh, whenever we got that, it said, it, it had that information written, but we didn't bring that with us.
Is that something that's gonna have to be sent off for calibration later on?
No, no, we, we calibrate that on a daily basis. It's, uh, really the maintenance agreement on that is so that they can come in and, and clean it, take the, the thing apart. If it breaks down, we can send it in. They'd send us a loner, but we have, uh, another one at the wastewater plant that we, we could use. If, uh, I, I'm not worried about that. If we had to buy one, it'd be, you know, a, a couple thousand dollars to get a new pH m- meter and the probes are separate. And like I said, we, we replace the probes about twice a year. They're about three hundred dollars a piece.
So we would need a motion to approve the mayor to enter into this agreement.
I make a motion for the mayor to. Good one to bring up with HAC service for this twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, authorize the mayor to enter to a, um, service agreement with HAC for twenty twenty-five in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
The motion second on the floor to authorize the mayor to enter to a service agreement with HAC uh, for twenty twenty-five in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
And there's one more item. Just wanna make sure everybody's aware, uh, if you get a phone call concerning this. There is a private sewer main on Meadow. And, uh, you might have already heard about this.
I got a text message, yeah.
Okay, so what, what happens with the private sewer main is that normally when the contractor builds this, he does not build it to a specification that the city can actually maintain the main. So it remains a private main. Uh, the city, I, I'm assuming that when this development was done, there was not a sewer main laid from, uh, North Main all the way to Elm Street. It only goes to the second house from the west going east onto Meadow on the north side of the road. And so there's a sewer main that runs in between Bell and Meadow that actually, the way I understand it is everybody along the north side of Meadow actually has lift stations in their basement and they pump the sewer all the way across, somehow get through the other people's yards to drop into this private main, which then runs down to a city main. Um, I've got.
How'd that happen?
Uh.
Bad design, sounds like.
Sounds like.
Yes, very, very bad design.
Kind of sucks.
And just recently, like Gary McElroy's daughter, I don't know what her name is, but, uh.
African, African native.
She paid to have her sewer line gravity fed across her neighbor's yard and then tie it into the city manhole, um, about two and a half houses down. So now she has, cause her sewer was pumping up and it was coming back into the house and so there, there, there's problems with this private sewer main. And people are having problems with their, their sewer, um, uh, can't remember the man's name.
Tom.
John Chapman.
Oh, yeah, he's having problems, but the person lives on Bell, uh, right behind him.
Mike Pixel?
No, that's not the one guy. Gene, Gene, uh, Albers. Gene, Gene, uh.
Miller.
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 Yeah, yeah, that, that sounds correct. I know he, uh, called me the other day. I went up there and, and there's a puddle of sewer as big as the table here and there's paper and, and everything. It's from that gentleman's house you just mentioned. I actually haven't remembered what his name was, but yeah. Um, it, it is that. And, uh, you know, he asked, well, what, what can I do? And I told him, I said, well, you can call the health department, you can call Department of Natural Resources, but the city cannot take ownership or do anything with this. It's no different than when Kendrick's Mobile Home Park was having that same issue. It's, it's all private.
It's responsibility of the owner that put it in, right?
Well, no, because he's probably no longer around.
Did he transfer the property?
Transfers to the property owners. So yes, if, if all the property, property owners got together, built a sewer main that the city would, uh, you know.
Was just back.
Yeah, to spec, then we could take it over. But I just want to let you know, if you do get phone calls, texts, you know, emails, whatever.
From the second house east?
All the way to.
That, what, last street that runs north and south?
North Elm.
North Elm?
Yes.
And then there's a couple houses past from North Elm.
Yeah, now, no, Nor- North Elm's okay. There's a city sewer main.
Just that street, just.
Just that, that street, yeah. Both sides of Meadow.
So that was done in like.
Sixty?
Sixty or seventy.
Right. Yeah, and the mayor asked me, well, what would it cost? Why don't we just put a sewer main in there? And I said, well, you're probably three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh my gosh.
Uh, it's about, uh, ten foot deep, uh, where it's gonna have to marry in. There's gonna be manholes. It's gonna be a kind of prevailing wage job, uh, plus hooking everybody up. And according to, uh, Gene, he told me that it's been probably fifteen, twenty years ago, the city actually offered to lay a main if everybody would pay to bring their lateral to the new city main. And nobody took the city up on it, so it just died.
What are the specs? This is a curiosity, just total curiosity. Can a private homeowner, can they put in a septic if they had to?
A what?
A septic tank.
I don't believe you, uh, I don't believe you can. I think your city ordinance probably. Spends.
Have that a goon.
That you cannot.
I don't know.
I don't know either. I, anyway, as, as you might imagine, uh, it was a short conversation after quoted three fifty to five hundred thousand dollars. Very short conversation.
So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. And that's not the only one. There's also one that runs in between Prairie and North Elm from Abbott to, to Bell. Um, so there, there are other ones in town as well as all of Kendrick's.
So here's my, my biggest concern with this going down, going forward. Cause we had this discussion the other day on drainage, just. It's when we have projects like this, like the establishment of a new subdivision or the MODAR or somebody coming through and redoing the highway, who is responsible for making sure these loose ends get addressed?
Should be an inspector involved.
There should be a building inspector or.
An engineer or.
Like you just said, I'm gonna span on what Robbins just said is that if we had a engineer of record that worked on a time basis, we could say, hey, we've got this project going on. We need you in here to make sure this is going right. And then, and then we'd be able to cover our bases with people who are qualified to, uh, make those assessments. Uh, I, I don't know if there's anyone in this room that is.
Hmm.
I'm not sure we have any resources on, on staff or even me if they're available to us to, that would be. But I think that's something we're gonna have to take a good look at is, uh, having an engineer of record uh, that we can engage. I don't know how that works financially, but I think we'd probably go down that road.
I'd really hate for another fifty years down the road, another subdivision or any, you know, something like this come back and bite us again and again. Not us, but our citizens.
Future.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, my guess would be somebody made extra money by not putting in.
Taking a shortcut.
The developer, the developer.
Now it's.
It's unfortunate.
Down the road, uh.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, George, I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a good question, but, um, how come we have a negative unaccounted pool of water, which I like, but it's too.
Is that, uh, does it say which month is that?
Uh, November.
November?
Yeah, the negative three percent.
Yeah, it's good, cause usually.
Well, if you look at, uh, uh, last, it, look at October.
Okay.
I think October was very high. That was, uh, whatever.
Twenty-four.
There, there were, there was something weird, uh, with the water numbers that month and, and Danette and I looked for how to figure, yeah, how to find the correct numbers and we, we couldn't. But it all comes out in the wash.
Um, and the other question, I don't understand Cannon Water and Marion Water. Do we, we sell them water, right?
We do sell them water and we used to have to manually read the meters, but now all the meters are actually hooked up for, uh, on, on the beacon system, the, the new AMI, uh, water read system. So now their bill is generated through the G Works and, and, and that system. So I, I probably don't have any, I have probably zeros.
You do.
It's just because that, that was in the initial, uh, spreadsheet that when, when people service came, Jack, he built a spreadsheet that we were supposed to use and.
You just, okay.
Yeah.
How, how big are those lines?
Which lines?
The one that go into Marion and.
Uh, Marion County is a six inch, uh, it's a six inch going down Route W to Cannon and a three inch heading south down twenty-four to Cannon.
And those, are those meters more expensive than the standard, I'm sure?
Yes.
And they.
Yeah, we've replaced the one for, uh, Marion County. And that one was, we actually replaced both of them. Uh, uh, the one for Marion County as well as the one, the three inch that heads south down twenty-four. Uh, the one that runs down W is what's called a mag meter. It doesn't have any moving parts and it can be tested and calibrated.
And then we sell to the landing too, correct?
No, we sell to Cannon Water who, and landing is their customer.
That's their customer.
We do, we sell to them because of the landing.
Yes.
Cause we, they couldn't provide enough.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one other thing is we need to get a, uh, an initial estimate back from Black and Beach on the, uh, cost, potential cost of the upgrade to, uh, water treatment plant. Uh, it's in the forward, take a look at that for convenience. It does not include labor, so that'll have to be added to it. Um, I think we're just gonna have some more conversation with Black and Beach and they'll be updating this agreement back to us. But once we do that, we'll, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, we expect you to pull one up uh, within the next week or two from the finding associates on, uh, the loan for the industrial park substation and the upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility. And we'll see where we're at when that comes in. Hopefully we'll, we'll have enough, uh, money proposed, uh, for a loan amount that will, will cover both of those without, uh, requiring us to go back and get, getting additional bonds. Um, that's pretty much it, um, quote, everything for water. Um, electric department.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Yeah, George, thank you very much for your, for your very informative report. Industrial Park, uh, substation is online. Uh, that occurred this previous Saturday at around noon. It was seamless. There was no interruption of power to the load.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome and, um.
There's a lot of buildup over that.
Yeah, well, it, uh, there was a, a lot of preparation.
They did a great job.
To try to make us know. I was there. I was down there inside.
Was it Saturday or Monday?
When we flipped the switch, yeah, because I just, you had to get a phone call.
I thought you rescheduled it to Monday.
I was there in spirit.
I was, I was social media seeing backlash, okay?
Dude, that's a mistake.
So it never happened and I'm very glad, but this is the first time over, in almost two years that had the South Davis Street Transformer.
Fantastic.
Issue, we would not have a recovery method.
No.
So now we have backup?
Yes, we can go, if we have to, we can go back and forth. Of course, we got a five point plan, uh, each be back next month after the holidays. We're gonna have them take a look at our five point plan. Uh, we've already got M P A's input. We're gonna have their input, uh, at some point in time. And I don't know if it'll be in twenty twenty-five, it just kinda depends on where we're at financially within the electric department. We'll, we'll be looking to send that, uh, oh, oh, this is, I don't want to go there. The old transformer out for inspection and repair. And, uh, planning on getting it back and we'll spend the money to pour a concrete pad and we'll have it sitting there ready to rock and roll. And, uh, it'll be a backup. And if we don't need it for a backup, uh, we'll, uh, continue on our five point plan. And that is to have a second twelve K V A line running down through the city. At which point we'll start working towards, uh, potentially going to twelve K, twelve K V A relay and switch gears. And that way, whenever something goes south, deteriorates or needs to be maintained, we will be able to buy the cars instead of living in the nineteen seventies.
Were they able to revisit Ms. Moss's property to see if there was something additional besides squirrels that were.
Uh, they, they went down there and, uh.
They put the squirrel thing around it.
I think it pretty much resolved according to the, to the, to the homeowners. Um, he did some work to isolate the primaries on the poles.
He lowered the neutral.
And he lowered, lowered the neutral, which I guess if a squirrel has a leg spread of, you know. Now they now have to be super squirrels, have to be super squirrels. I think it'd be super squirrels. Uh, he did put insulators over, uh, the switches on the end down the pole. So he did take, he did take several actions to, to remediate the problem. So, uh, we hope, we hope it's done and we don't.
I hope so.
And we did order some animal protector.
Like squirrel guards or whatever.
Yeah. Hey, can you ask him to give a dream layer?
Predator.
You're gonna ask him to give you a big dream layer?
Yes, I, 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 I don't believe that can get done.
Can we let Del go next? Cause there's nobody here from Dan.
He, he real. He, he's real close. Uh, yeah, uh, I only got any for gas, I got nothing for street, airport.
I was approached by Diane Hendricks, Ruth Mollum's daughter. She wanted to know if they, if their family bought a picnic table, if we could put it somewhere at the airport and kinda order a roof, maybe with a small plaque or something, uh. Uh, I, I thought it sounded like a really good idea, and at the same time, I'd like to, if we could, get a plaque made that describes Captain Ben Smith and where he's from and what he did and what took place. Because a lot of people would come through, they'd see his picture on the wall, they'd say, well, who was he, what happened?
Yeah, what do you do?
If we had a plaque like what's out there in the yard or something, somewhere out of the way.
Yeah.
Um, as far as a picnic table, I'd like to, you know, maybe get with, I don't know who we need to get with, if we put something permanent, put a permanent plaque somewhere. I would, I don't want it to wind up in a spot that, um, would deter us from any future plans. So maybe I'll talk to some of the other pilots about it and, and maybe just Ryan Huesman, is it, if he ever gets online.
Who was he, which, who was he with again? What company was he with?
Miko?
Miko.
Oh.
And we needed to get that, whatever that approval was from the state so that he could be our consultant. I don't quite follow him, that's all about.
Another, another engineer from Miko dropped in to pay me a visit.
Did he bring cookies?
I, I was on, oh, huh?
Did someone want to crack the cookies?
Somebody, one, somebody from Miko brought cookies last night.
Right, right, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm supposed to set up a meeting with them, so maybe we'll, I don't know, we'll see how it goes.
Have we done what we needed to do to get that Miko engineer?
No, we have not.
With the airport, right?
Or we need state approval or something?
Send out, send out, you have to put together a package and send out a request for qualification. You just, you just, something has to be done, it takes time, you have to get all your information put together on what it is that you want them to do. You have to be very specific, uh, in, uh, what the project is, and I don't know that, uh.
There, it might be something on the website that talks about that grant program.
Oh, that might be. You know, I, I wanna be very upfront with everybody, um, having resources to work on grants and having resources available to work on, uh, some of the things that we want to get done. Right now, we're kinda limited. Um, and I think, you know, there'll be, become a point where we'll have more time available to, uh, to work on some of that stuff, administratively, as far as who, what other resources are, or I don't know, you know, whether to go in and hire a, a firm that does grant writing.
Yeah, you can't get grants now anyway, cause we don't have a darned audit.
No, we're working on that.
I know.
I'm not sure what, what way you wanna answer back from, you know, I think, on the audit. Yeah, you're right, I forgot about it, our, our hands are kinda tied. Okay.
Um, but back to Dell, I think the picnic table is a wonderful idea as well.
Say that.
The picnic table is a wonderful idea.
And as far as the plaque, I'd like to get with maybe, uh, Captain Ben Smith's family and.
Absolutely.
Get, yeah, get with, uh, get with his family, find, get your background information, uh, let's get something written up. We can get it out to someone who makes plaques.
Ain't us.
CWs or something like that.
Yeah.
Or something like, I don't, nothing expensive.
Right, something nice though.
Yeah, something nice, I mean.
Essential airport's name, I don't think it'd be.
I would like to, you know, I won't be here, but, you know, if we were to come back forty-five years from now, I'd like to still be able to see it and read it and, and be in good condition, so brass or bronze or whatever it has to be. Something, something other than plastic, obviously.
Right.
Something just, besides just a picture on the wall and nobody left.
Know what it means, yeah.
To be, uh. I, I agree.
That's nice, I, I like that idea.
I agree.
And we did, uh, uh, Mike had asked me a while back about the fuel price, uh, with Pennywell and I, a couple of months ago, we raised the price to five dollar and twenty cents a gallon, which is, you know, Hannibal was now four ninety-five. But the fuel prices come down for, for the fuel they bought, so they can sell it at a lower price. We're still dealing with fuel that we bought.
We're still paying for the fuel we already purchased, yeah.
Right, so we're, we're gonna stay there and.
That's fine.
Or possibly maybe get to a point where we can hold four thousand gallons and maybe buy at a lower price and then parade them together and.
Average it out, I get it, I get it, I get it. Okay, well, thank you, I think it's a good idea, I like that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dell.
Thank you for what you do, Albert. Um, Mosswood, nothing. Next on our agenda is presentation of bills and due payments under tab, uh, twelve.
Where are we, Bill? The, are the invoices, I mean, it's put up for department? Okay, that was not my question. I make a motion to approve the bill's accounts payable from December nineteen twenty-four.
Awesome.
We have a motion, a second, who seconded it?
Me.
President.
President of the board?
President Osborne.
We have a motion, President Osborne liked that. Uh, we have a motion second on the floor to approve bills payable, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
He abstained, Thomas. He's on the bill's table.
Since I'm on it.
Oh, then we don't have enough to do.
We don't have enough to do.
Yeah, we do.
We have a majority of, of the forum.
I didn't think we could.
There's still four people.
There's still four people here.
There's still four people present.
He's abstaining, he's abstaining, so if the other three of you say aye, then we've got it.
Okay.
If we do a, another no, then I have to have a tiebreaker.
Okay.
We're good. Motion carries.
Messy up there.
Good old Mikey, I bet you. Unfinished business, there being none, what do we do now?
Process it.
We need to consider going into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six ten point oh two one three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting employees.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting specific employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or reported. Roll call.
Alderman and Schneider?
Yes.
Alderman, seven.
Yes.
Alderman, Osborne?
Yes.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, yes.